Recording is in progress. And I will call this regular meeting of the Andover Inland Water Courses Commission to Order at seven o'clock on Tuesday, February 27, 2022. I see on screen. The Commissioners Larson and Monroe are present as well as myself. So I guess that leaves only Ed Smith absent. Next item on the agenda would be changes in order to the agenda. I don't have any. Does anybody else have any to suggest in terms of additions or or changes in order to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to item number four, approval of minutes. First of all, the minutes for January 11, 2022, our regular meeting. Does anyone have comments or changes, changes, corrections, I should say, to those minutes? I had one item that I noted. Item number three on on the minutes, which was changes in order to the agenda. The motion was carried by unanimous consent rather than anonymous. We were there. We were. Other than that, I didn't notice anything. Did anyone else catch anything? If not, I'll move through those minutes for a second.
I'll second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Monroe. And those in favor can signify by raising their hands to signify I. Notice unanimous. Next, the minutes from our sidewalk and special meeting that occurred on January 22.
I have no comments.
Okay. Okay, so if we don't have any suggestions or corrections or changes, again, I'll move that we accept those or approve those minutes and ask for the second.
I'll second.
Okay, so motion and second. All in favor again, raise your hand to say I, okay? And the motion is carries unanimously. That brings us to the section on public comment. And I don't believe we have any, so we will move to old business, item number six. The first item of old business is the application number 2127 for work to be done at number three Lakeside Drive. I see the applicant Gary McCullough is on the call. And I note that since our last consideration of this, of course, we've had the sidewalk at that location. And we also received one bit of information in the form of an improvement, I'm sorry, approval by the Andover Lake Management Association for the lake wall rebuild and dock removal portion of that project, those affecting the lake bed. And we also received some information that Agent Wagner dug out of the files regarding the original permit back in 1993 for the construction of the sand beach that was at issue in the original application. Now, as I understand it, there's been some discussion between Agent Wagner and the applicant regarding this project and trying to get it to the point where we can go ahead and work on it. So I guess I'll ask first if the applicant has any immediate comments to make on that application.
Well, I I guess thanks to for Alma for the approval on the, you know, on the on the rock wall side of things. And looking forward to your guys' feedback on what Joe and I put together regarding the next steps for the the, you know, the sand beach.
I wanted to ask the question, will the wall restoration, rebuild necessitate working on the lake bed? I know you have permission from Alma to do it, but there is the question of high water and getting the, you know, in other words, is it going to be necessary for this work to be done before the lake is raised?
I would say we'd want to get that work done before the lake is raised, yes.
Okay. The sand beach part, because it's going to be perched and away from the the lake bed, wouldn't be as critical, but I thought that I wanted to clarify that aspect. Because it obviously has to do with the timing of issuing the permit as well.
Right. Can I add something? This is Agent Wagner. I just wanted to make you aware, Chairman, I'm not sure if you noticed, because it came in really late addition, I sent to all the commission members was a revised project plan for for this application. So it was it was only sent maybe like a half hour ago.
Okay, I didn't.
And then a a couple of revised descriptions with the with the new perched beach construction, a diagram of the the riprap wall and stuff. So I don't know if anyone had a take chance to take a look at it. Like I said, it was really last minute, so. But you guys should have that on in your email.
I got it.
I've got that as well, Agent Wagner, but I have to say how disheartening it is to log into my computer to attend a meeting that I spent a lot of time preparing for.
Right.
And once again, the second meeting in a row, find that there is a updated plan, if you will, that I've had, I have not had a chance to look at until we walk in the door for this meeting. That I I find that very disrespectful to the time I spend trying to prepare to have a good discussion on an application.
I would tend to agree with that. It the fact is that, you know, I don't think it's fair to commissioners to try to comprehend the changes and updates in in real time during the meeting. And so if you, I would appreciate it. I think it would be good in any event if we could. If if Agent Wagner could walk us through the changes that are intended. I am going to propose that we defer a vote on this and that, you know, we may have to ask for an extension on the was affected the deadline for action on this application. But in any event, as they say, a good summary of the changes in the plan would be useful at this time.
Yeah, I'd like to, yeah, you know, move on forward as best we can. I'll apologize upfront. We kind of were waiting for the approval from Alma to occur because we knew we couldn't go any do anything until we had that. But we got that over the weekend. You know, they did the best they could to pull that together. And then, you know, we 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 took and looked through all the information at hand and think we put together a pretty good proposal here. And thinks we, I think we've covered a lot of concern areas. My goal, and again, I apologize and had no intent to be disrespectful or try to pull a fast one or anything like that. So if we could move forward in good faith here and, you know, if Joe could walk us through this and let you guys digest it and we can come back at the next meeting for more discussion or whatever we have to do, but you know, I'll just leave it at that. But this was not intended to be a disrespect disrespectful event.
Thank you for that.
I'm not sure that coming back to the next meeting is even an option, because once we approve it, you've got a two-week waiting period before the work can start. And that gets us to the time where we're planning to raise the water level in the lake. And so I would like to start the discussion tonight by addressing the actions we're going to take to remediate the violation that we have in existence and is it it has existence since last October, where there's a significant amount of new sand added to the lake bed that we need to make sure we get out of there before we start raising the water level in the lake.
Right, so as soon as as soon as it unfreezes, I mean, I tried to, it's like hard as a rock. But I've got resources to 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 pull that out as soon as it's we're able to do that. So that will absolutely happen. That's the first priority.
That is not listed as the first step in your plan.
I know we had talked about that and had permission or I don't even know if it was permission. It was I was told to do that, and I said, yes, I would do that. So we can add that as the first step, but that that has been a given from, you know, from the beginning is what what once I heard this was not a good thing, I stopped everything and was told to really cease and desist and wait for the process to be told what to do.
Okay, so let's take it as read that removal of sand from the lake that will be the first action and will occur as soon as possible.
I am still concerned in in again, this is probably a question that nobody wants asked. But how are we going to get the sand out of the lake bed?
I think it'd be worth going through that, what resources you have available and how you plan on doing it.
Yeah, well, it's going to be, we're going to take shovels and put them in wheelbarrows. I got a lawn tractor, we're going to pull wheelbarrows up and do that. I mean, we're not going to bring in any heavy equipment in. We're going to go down to the level of where, you know, where it was.
That's going to take quite a few people. You got about 10 yards of sand there, right?
About 10, yeah.
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 And again, I'll just reiterate, you know, the water level goes up starting the third weekend, roughly third weekend in March.
Yeah.
That's when we close the valve. It takes about a week or two to get up to summer level.
Yeah. It'll be labor.
The initial application, it said the amount of sand was 10 to 15 yards. Do we know exactly how much sand was delivered?
Well, it was in the in the lake bed. So there's there's sand that was put above the 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 lake in the existing beach. And then there was some sand put down below. So you know, it's between the two, it's 15, but there's probably, and these are all estimate, I mean, they're estimates. So it's, you know, saying it's probably, you know, I don't, you know, it's probably 10. You know, as I think about it, it's probably more on the beach side. On the land side, it's probably more like eight or nine there, and it's probably, you know, six or seven down below, but it's, you know, it's the total.
It was just my perception from the sidewalk that the majority of the sand was in the beach, but the your yard was covered with snow, so it made it a little bit hard to tell.
Yeah, yeah, it is hard to tell, but yeah, I mean, that existing beach kind of goes back further than the than the, you know, how far out that it goes into the water is more, you know, more on the land than into the water. But I said 10 because, you know, it was just a an estimate, so there may be a little bit more there, you know, it was going to be spread out.
Well, did you, yeah, did you order it by the truckload or did you order, you know, normally I go get my mulch and I buy it, you know, by the yard, so I know exactly how many yards I've got, but that's probably a bigger amount than what I would be used to for mulch.
Yeah, right. Yeah, so it was. It was 15, but some of it's on the land and some of it's in the water. So to say exactly how much, I mean, we could just say 5050 or 6040, I I don't want to miss, you know, I don't know for sure.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So with the understanding that that all the sand is going to be removed from below the high watermark and the remaining sand, some of it you intend to redistribute above the 200-foot setback line and some of it will go into the proposed sandbox or perched beach, if you will, then we have then again, an understanding that there won't be any sand left beyond or none of the newly deposited sand will remain either on the so-called beach or below the high watermark. Eventually, it's all going to get relocated.
That's that's the intent, yes.
Then Joe, could you bring up on or Davy and Joe, he bring up that plan? I don't have, for some reason, my mail client is refusing to find new mail for me, so I haven't even had a chance to look at the revised and the most recent update. So in order to be on the same page, I'd like to be able to see the page.
Joe, I can share it if you'd like, or you can. It might be easier if you do, so you can walk through it, but I can share it as well.
Yeah, if you want to share, that'd be good.
Okay.
More experienced.
Okay.
This is the first page is the proposed project plan that's updated. With existing stone lake walls to the north and south end are going to be reconstructed as riprap walls and they'll slope away from the lake and they'll be constructed.
Looking at a picture, Joe, we're we're looking at the the project description.
Yeah, I know. We're just going through the whole thing. So, yeah, riprap top layer, then a layer of fabric underneath the riprap and they'll be crushed on for drainage underneath. And no machinery will be used on the lake bed. And then the existing dock will be removed, which will need hand tools to remove the two pilings in the lake bed. And then the existing sand beach will be moved behind the 25-foot-long-by-three-foot-high-riprap-wall. And then this will create the perched beach and the sand will be contained by four-by-four posts buried in the ground. So the area will be dug out as necessary to provide for approximately 10 inches of finished sand depth. The four-by-four posts will be stacked as necessary to contain sand and account for elevation changes along the edges of the beach and then the top of the post will will be elevated above the surface of the lawn, so that'll prevent the sand, you know, one prevent the sand from leaving the area and then it'll prevent water that's coming downhill during a rain event from washing any of the sand out. And then that that whole area will be lined with a textile fabric and it'll be brought up and attached near the top of the four-by-four posts to prevent the sand from reaching out of anything. And then that area where the extinct sand beach is will be will be restored to to a lawn area. So if you could move down to the to the next page, this is like an updated site plan shows the the four-by-four perched beach area behind the stone wall. And then it'll it shows the filter fabric behind the riprap wall. And if you go on to the next page, that's the the detail, the riprap with the fabric underneath it and then the crushed stone underneath that. And then the detail for the for the the beach.
Why did we shift from a rebuild of the stone wall to a riprap wall?
Look, Gary, you have a.
Well, well, when I was looking at the recommendations, it it said to that was preferred, preferred method is a riprap wall. Those preferred material.
I would venture to say, based on the 1993 photographs that Agent Wagner found in the files, that it was hardly a wall to begin with. And that the proposed riprap barrier, if you will, would be a distinct, well, certainly an improvement over the existing conditions. And it wasn't so matter of so much a matter of rebuilding a wall as creating one. And I was, by the way, interested to note that in the top of the in the upper of the three photographs, if you recall those photos that, again, from the 1993 application, it looks like in the background, there's basically a sandbox with very light construction equipment. The kind of thing my grandson might like to play with.
Well, the thing I liked about the three-foot-high stone wall was it created, at least to my mind, a significant buffer between the sand and the lake where the riprap wall continues a slope down into the lake.
Yeah.
And I did not see in the document where it talked about riprap was preferred, it did say natural stone riprap or a stone wall.
Well, I think we were also somewhere, we said that we're going to have that stone wall tilting back towards the you know, away from from bottom to top, away from the water. Angled back a bit.
But it would not, I mean, the riprap wall won't is won't extend above the lawn or above the sand. It'll it'll be at that level or at the top of the riprap wall.
The sand would be not all the way to the top of that wall.
Okay.
That's the intent.
I think the the elevation shows the the four-by-four posts, basically the that will be retaining the sand is above the level, it's above grade of the lawn in cross-section.
And you have the fabric beneath it.
And also is, I'm not sure that that slope indicated in the cross-sectional drawing with the riprap top layer, I'm not sure that the lawn, based on the photographs and recollection from our sidewalk, that there is actually a slope to the lawn at that point. It's pretty flat in that.
Yeah. Flattens out.
So was so you are not going to rebuild the stone wall? You're going to replace it with a riprap wall or are you still planning on rebuilding it in some areas?
Well, I I would say that if there's some some foundation, you know, there's a there's a footprint there of a wall, right? And some of it is stone, and I think if there's some of that that can be used and then a build above that, the, you know, build on top of whatever we can salvage. So I guess that might be a hybrid sort of approach where it's not a rip and replace for sure. It's, I think we're going to try and leverage whatever material is there and then build up on it.
Okay. Because in the permit that we approved, I mean, it was basically to rebuild the stone wall that had been there.
Well, yeah, I mean, and then it's because I'm not as the smartest guy in the world, I thought that we could, you know, use this material. If we want to use all stone, I'm I'm not married to any type of material. If you guys are telling me you want riprap, you want stone, I'll go with the stone. And then.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Riprap is stone. It's just a question of whether it's a range. And as they say, when you when you look at the photograph of the wall as existed in 1993, it's not really a wall. There's some stone there and it's pretty rough and it's maybe already deteriorating. But, you know, in in the sense of trying to rebuild to that condition, I don't think that would be desirable objective, either aesthetically or functionally. And so, although as the applicant explained it, using the existing material, you know, what's still there would would certainly be beneficial and desirable. There's going to have to be more in order to make a sufficient retaining wall out of this, or either way, material is going to have to be brought in. And the question is, you know, is it preferable to have a laid structured wall or will the riprap have the same function? And, and do the job adequately?
Yeah, I haven't seen the, the photograph from nineteen ninety-three, so I, I don't know what it looked like back then. I assume it's not much different than it looks now.
Well, actually, uh, maybe Abby, could you, uh, bring that up? It's, uh, the, uh, the document is labeled photos of project, Lakeside Drive nineteen ninety-three photos of project. It's in the, um, application materials, I believe.
I see pictures of projects and pictures from agent visit. That's two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, so those were just circulated by email?
I think so.
Okay.
I caution you to, this is Agent Wagner, I'm just cautioning you to, you know, not consider, um, twenty, you know, twenty-year-old pictures, well, twenty, thirty-year-old pictures really, um, as like a, a pre-existing condition. I mean, a lot could have happened between then and sure, and now, so, uh.
Yeah.
Right, but we don't have any, we don't have any application or any permit, uh, for, you know, there would have been a, there should have been a permit if any further work was done on the wall between then and now.
Yeah, ho- hopefully. It doesn't always happen, but, uh.
But my expectation coming to the meeting tonight was there was gonna be a three-foot-high retaining wall that in spite of the lack of a lot of other stones there, was gonna be, you know, have extra stone brought in to build a nicely finished wall, just like we see at all the other places that have rebuilt the wall.
Riprap can be good in, in a way though, because it, uh, because of the angle, it, it dissipates wave energy a little better than, uh, than your typical ninety-degree, you know, finished, more finished wall, which can, uh, so it's, it can be a preferred method. The, uh, the gently sloping area kind of does a little bit better job of recreating a natural shoreline. Then, uh, and the abrupt upright walls that you see.
And we have riprap walls, the dollings put in a riprap wall a couple of years ago in front of their place.
I, uh, and, and I like the wall that they put in over there. It was just a question I'm trying to, I, I have tried very hard to convince myself that putting all this sand next to the beach is a good idea.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, with, with the wall that was there, I thought I had, I like the four by four post, the perimeter around it, I, uh, you know, I, I thought that was a good idea. I thought it was specified in the, uh, you know, the New Hampshire document. It also talks about, uh, you swales around it, uh, too. I, I don't know. Uh, I convinced myself maybe a swale wasn't necessary. If we had the four by four posts or the railroad ties, uh, with the three-foot-high wall, certainly we could keep the sand out of the beach. I, I was, that in, I think I have the pictures from ninety-three so that if I were to share the screen, I could pull it up. The thing that impressed me about those pictures was the size of the sand pile that we used to construct the beach. And I have to ask myself, where's that sand now? And we'll, the answer to that is it's all in the lake. And, and I'm trying very hard because is that document, uh, described, uh, you know, vulnerable lakes are shallow lakes, uh, which ours is very shallow. Climate change, if you will, is resulting in the, 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 uh, the lake heating up. And so we're having more problems, uh, with that and, uh, as a property on owner on the lake, uh, you know, I feel compelled to try and make sure we're doing what we can to protect the lake. But, um, but anyhow, I, I came here tonight hoping to have a great friendly conversation and, and I just, uh, got derailed when I saw here's a new plan and hadn't had a chance to look at it. But I'm, I'm ready to, I'll listen now.
Yeah, so this is Gary, uh, I, I, you know, when I, when I'm thinking of this, this, the, the, the wall, the twenty-five foot wall, then there's this open spot where the beach was there, there, back in ninety-three and all this time, there was a beach, there was no retaining wall there. There was nothing there. And then on the corner, um, on the corner of the property where the seven, seven-foot wall, seven-and-a-half-foot wall, just a corner there, that was, there was another wall there. So that sand had nothing holding it back all this time. When I saw that and I took into consideration, you know, all these things I'm learning and the concerns and working with the information I have, I really thought this, you know, retaining wall, a beach that seemed like a really nice kind of, and I'm not even a compromise, but a, a solution to, you know, how to do this. And, uh, you know, I'm not a lake guy. I'm not a, well, you know, expert in all this and I'm working as we go here, trying to, you know, make, make the, the best plan and taking all these considerations. And that's, I was hoping, and I think we are having a good conversation, so I, I think if we can continue along that, it is, are we on the right track here to build a riprap wall? If riprap is no good, but Joe thinks, you know, feels that it's good, maybe not as aesthetically pleasing, but it may be different. Other people have done it. I'm okay with it. We contain that sand. We remove the sand that's there because it's not doing anybody any good anymore. And we do that. The details, this is, I think that's where we're at now is the detail part. Are, are we on the right track? You know, it's gotta ask that.
I can't, I can't say that we're on the wrong track. It's just, you know, I, I went out and carefully considered the track that I, was sprung on me at the last minute, at the last meeting. And and was happy to address that plan. Not the ripraps, maybe it is better. I don't know. All I could do was go out and study the plan that was presented.
Correct. Um, could we scroll down to the final page of this new? I wanna see what else we've got. Okay, the, the overview. With the, okay, the existing sand beach and the, um, okay, the sand, the, the stone bank and dock existing conditions. So again, I, okay, I'm not quite clear here. What would be the setback between the proposed riprap wall and the sandbox of the perch beach?
Uh, setback?
Yeah, I mean, there's.
Would there be, you know, there, there'd be the, um, geo, the fabric, and then there's gonna be some, um, gravel. So I, I, you know, I, I don't know, it's, I, I couldn't say it's a footer or so, maybe? I don't know.
Okay, but some separation, physical separation between between the riprap and the, uh, well, we'll call it the lower retaining post or railroad tie, the four by four. So, you know, what I'm looking at is again, do we have adequate measures in place here to prevent sand from eroding from the, uh, from the perch beach into the lake? I mean, I, it seems to me that that's really the essential question about this design. We, we wanna get, we, we, you know, the, um, the Andover Lake Management Association was owns the lake says, or owns the lake bed says, no sand. Okay, we don't want sand. The, uh, wetlands regulations say we should be avoiding erosion of material into a water course. So we're mutually agreed that, you know, we don't want sand moving into the lake, right? And the question is, do we have adequate measures in place to, to achieve that? Now, uh, Agent Wagner, you were saying that, uh, based on your understanding of the, um, well, for example, the information we have from, from New Hampshire and so forth, that a riprap wall sloped riprap wall would be equally effective as a vertical, uh, retaining wall in making a transition between the lake and that the design would prevent erosion. Correct?
Yes.
Seems to me that that would be a, an improvement on the existing condition. Like I look at the plan as a whole and I see, I mean, you can tell, looking at those little pictures, that, uh, it's obviously filled. It was brought in to build the lawn. Um, it's kind of what the, the edge of the wall looks like, you know, there's boulders that were pushed out when they were grading and then they put the tops to lower it. So I mean, putting the riprap there wouldn't, wouldn't be a huge change to the existing condition, but it would, it would prevent some erosion, um, of the, the lawn into the lake, which is good. And also by relocating the beach um, and restoring that to a more natural shoreline, um, I think, I mean, overall, the, the plan seems like it's, it's a net positive, uh, for the, for the shore, would eliminate the, uh, you know, ninety, ninety-nine percent of the erosion risk of the existing conditions, um, which, you know, even if, even if the applicant removes the sand that he put there, there's, there's still some sand there uh, from before. So, so by, you know, kind of letting that grow up into a grass, grassy area on more natural shoreline, I think, uh, I don't know, I think it's just a net positive.
By the way, uh, Jed, you were asking about the quantity of sand. Uh, by my top of the head reckoning, uh, the original project must have required about twelve yards of sand uh, to get it to the dimensions that they specify, uh, in the permit.
Okay.
And you're right, of that probably ten is now further out from the shore. Okay, so, um, uh, the question is, how, how do we watch and perceive? We've got, you know, really, we have uh, three components to this. We have, uh, the, first of all is the season correct, that is getting the sand out, uh, from its present location. We're sure that's gonna happen, uh, as soon as possible. Uh, second would be the, uh, reconstruction. Uh, of course, the third part is the, uh, removal of the dock. That was approved by ALM and, uh, I don't know that there are any issues with that. That's all, and we're gonna, and any application to replace that dock would be a subsequent issue, right? There's no, there's no consideration now, as I understand it, to replacing that dock.
That's correct. That's, yeah, right. Okay. I just wanna get rid of it. It's a eyesore and it's dangerous and I may not ever put a dock in there or next year. Maybe we'll, we'll get down that path, but that's not in, that's not in the plan. Just wanna get rid of it.
Okay. So are there further questions or, um, comments on, on the application? And I'd like to get some sense of how we should, uh, proceed, uh, with the application at this point in time.
Yeah, Chair Elliott, I had a, uh, what, what, what you were like, uh, talking, uh, asking, I don't know if that was really answered. The, the question of the splashover from the, uh, that, um, with the riprap type uh, wall, you know, you, uh, is in the distance between that riprap wall and your, your sandbox, if you will, um, there, there maybe should be a little distance between the wall and the, in the, in the, uh, perch beach because to keep that splash, oversplash from, you know, pulling that sand out of there, even if, even if you got a four by four, if, if, if there's enough water flying over the, over the wall, uh, it's, it's gonna wash that sand out of there. Unless you're far enough away where the splash isn't landing in the, uh, in the, uh, beach, perched beach. So there should be a distance between those two items that you're planning to put in.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know, yeah. I mean, if you guys want it, yeah, uh, my only, I, I can't say because I was never here during the season. And the water down there is pretty shallow. I don't know that there's, you know, a lot of wave action that comes flashing over. I could be totally wrong. But if, from a design perspective, the consensus is that we need, uh, some material, I, I don't know what we would do in between there. We might have to add material in between, right? We've got that fabric there up against the wall to, to keep stuff going out, but you're worried about the splash and then the splash causing, uh, the sand to jump out, kind of thing?
It would puddle eventually. I mean, if there's a lot, I, I, down that part of the lake, I'm not sure if you get the kind of waves that you see at some of the other sections. I'm not sure. It gets pretty wavy. I mean, there's.
Well, for instance, on, on one of the big storms last summer, the water in the lake was, I saw it fourteen inches above the, uh, the spillway level that it just filled up so much by coming in there. And that, you know, that raised the high water level around the perimeter of the lake significantly.
Yeah, I think the max we got to was eighteen inches, actually, during one of those.
That, that, that's a big increase.
Yeah. Yeah.
Could you back to page number two of the, uh, doc? Okay, yeah, uh, with in that, um, in that diagram, it does appear, uh, that the sandbox is pretty much buttered, that's, uh, the, the, uh, the wall. Hold on a second, I'm getting that unstable internet message. Here's to clear it up. Okay. So, uh, yeah, so, yeah, the question is, would a little bit of setback then help in, again, prevent, you know, again, the main objective, prevent sand from, um, eroding into the lake?
So, so, um, I mean, so from a design perspective, would, would that just be like an open space there? Or what would, we'd have the two by fours there, but what what would we put in between? What would the buffer then be? What would you suggest that be?
Maybe possibly, uh, uh, a, a third four by four on top or make it or something of that nature. I don't know if that would do it. I, I'm not, I don't, not familiar with the riprap wall, so that's, um, I mean, is it good, is that gonna reduce the amount of, size of these waves or is it gonna deflect the water in a, uh, better than a rock wall or? better than a rock wall or, uh, it's slope like that? I don't know. It almost seems like it would be easier for the water to go up, up and over that.
Looking, uh, I was just, this Agent Wagner, I'm just looking at the, the map of, uh, where Three Lakeside Drive is on the lake. I mean, it's kind of set back in a, in a cove, um, a little bit. So I'm not sure. It'd be hard to see like the way the, what the white lake wall is facing. It kind of faces towards the other side of the cove. So there's really not going to be a whole lot of fetch in that area. So I don't know. I could see how like, like floodwater might, may, may affect it, but I don't, I don't really see how, uh, like what wave action, just because there's no, there's no fetch, because it's in the, it's kind of facing the opposite way. It's almost like ninety degrees to the main lake body, looking at the picture.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's helpful. Yeah.
Gary, were you planning to have the sand higher than the level of the four by fours? Or were the four by fours going to be higher than the level of the sand?
The four by fours are going to be higher than the level of the sand.
So that'll give you a little more protection.
Yeah, so. Now.
And we do not, yeah, we don't get big waves in the, in the cove. It just doesn't have any, any room to develop.
One of the, one of the ideas that I had from the, the proceeding plan, and you talk about the, the size of the sandbox. It looked like from your drawing, it was twenty-five feet wide along the lakeside, fifteen feet deep into the yard, then fifteen feet across the back. So it was like a trap as well.
Yeah.
On, on the plan, you know, where we had the, the high rock wall, you know, one of my thoughts was if we made it a fifteen by fifteen square, that gave some more of the rock walls to protect around the edge. So that that, uh, that prevented the sand from going right around the corner and into the lake. You, you've eliminated that concern a little bit with the, uh, the four by four posts going in. But when I did, you know, my back of the envelope calculation on the fifteen feet by fifteen feet, which is three yards by three yards, which is about, uh, you know, nine yards. Um, and you put ten yards of sand in there. You know, that's, that's a lot of sand that, uh, that raises that up. No, it was five, five yards by five yards is twenty-five. But I, I came up, you know, it was going to be at least a foot of sand uh, high. And, uh, and so I guess, you know, you, you're saying you've got fifteen total. It would be important to know how much sand you're going to move up by the house for whatever future need you have. But you need to know how deep to dig the hole before you start putting the sand in there, or else you're going to get it, you know, a bunch of sand in there and then you're going to find that it's, I guess you just add more four by fours to it. But I, it would be nice to have that kind of detail on how deep you expected the sand to be, how many four by fours it took to get up. So we can see how much extra height there is on the four by four perimeter around, uh, the sand. And that would give us the opportunity to make a good judgment on do we want to put a swale in on the landward side of all the, uh, the, the three sides of the sandbox as was described in the New Hampshire document. And that's the kind of detail that I didn't see here.
Yeah, and I mean, I couldn't do the math if you had a gun to my head on how much sand that would take.
I, I couldn't either if you had a gun to my head, but if I were sitting here in.
But I understand, I understand. I like the idea of, um, you know, I, I was just going, you know, twenty-five feet because that was the size of the wall. I'm, I'm good with, let's move that into, um, you know, like seventeen or something like that. So we have, what's, uh, eight, four feet on either side.
Yep.
Right? And, and then quite honestly, I mean, I was thinking I was going to have sand left over that we would just pull back up, right? If, um, a, and that would, you know, uh, how, how much sand it would take to do that? Uh, I, I don't know. We'd have to go take that as a homework assignment and go look in, into that. But I think there's probably enough there to, you know, get, my intent is to have just a play area for the kids and a, you know, a kind of place to hang out.
And I, and I like that thought.
And if, and if it's smaller than what, you know, that's why, you know, we're, we're having this discussion. It's a work in progress. So that's, this is good. So.
If you actually talked to a contractor or a landscaper that, uh, would be able to, to get in there before mid-March?
So, um, I've talked to a guy who's done landscaping for me, uh, at my previous house. Um, and he did the work over on, uh, for, for Todd over on, um, next door on one. Um, but I'm going to be putting this out to bed and, um, uh, but I have not talked to another guy uh, about this. When this plan comes together, then I'll, I'll, you know, do that. Um, the guy that I'm working with now, um, the amount of money that it's going to cost requires me to do my due diligence on, on that, on that side of it and get another, another bit.
I understand. Yep.
So, so can we, can we get this project done before the lake fills back up? We certainly can get the sand out of there. And if we, if we don't have it, um, you know, the, we can get the stone wall properly built, but the, the beach part may have to wait. Um, and we'd have to pull the sand up two hundred feet. I don't know. I mean, there's a, there's a bunch of, you know, a lot of unknowns on that right now. And I, I, I don't want to be wishy washy and commit to something that I, I, you know.
Oh, I understand. Then, and the reason I mentioned that is because, you know, normally, and, and we got ourselves into this a little bit backwards. But normally guys, uh, you know, one, the landscaper makes the plan for them. And he comes in with a commitment, I will do it next winter, but we're talking about plans, you know, in the July, August timeframe. So that, uh, so that you can get that commitment from the landscaper to come in and do that. Uh, with it being, you know, mid-February already, I think you might be hard pressed to get a guy to do your rock wall this season.
Well, well, yeah, I mean, I was, I went up to, uh, Andover Landscaping and tried to get somebody to help me up there and nope, I never, I had to went there twice and everybody's busy. And then in COVID and then, then this, and then every time you turn around, it's, you know, reason, you know, stuff's happening all over the world, right? So, uh, slowing everything down. But yeah, that, that, the timeline is going to be, um, is, is going to be tough. Um, now I know Alma gave, it was a two-year window saying, you know, this is approved for a two-year window. I don't know. Is that, is that a same thing that you guys would do that I could get the work done within two years or? And I, and I want to get it done as soon as possible, but if, if we got to wait for the next cycle with the water, I mean, that's what we have to do. I mean.
Well, i- i- and just trying to figure out a way ahead, one of the options is that we make, you know, instead of trying to design this during the commission meeting, you know, we've given you a lot of good feedback now. Maybe we work on getting the sand out of the lake. You know, and I'm worried about doing that because the first thing that's going to happen is it'll get soft enough for you to be able to get your shovel in the sand. But the, the lake bed's going to be so soft at that point that moving a wheelbarrow through there is going to be next to impossible. And, and so I'm really concerned about just getting the sand out of the lake this year. And it would give you a long time to, uh, you know, I, I, I think we're getting close on having an acceptable solution. I just don't know how many hours we can devote to coming up to that tonight. And, uh, when, when I don't think you'd be able to, yeah, I'm not confident that you'd be able to get, uh, a landscape guy to come in and, and do it once, once we approved it. And so maybe you, you just say, and, and maybe we've got some latitude. I don't know to have a stockpile someplace without dragging all the sand to two hundred feet away. You know, maybe, uh, there's a way to cover up a pile of sand so that it doesn't wash into the lake, um, while, while we're, you know, trying to figure out the way ahead. Uh, I want to work with you. I just.
No, no, that's, that's good. I mean, uh, thinking out loud, I, you know, probably put down a tarp or something where we want to put the, the new, uh, the new beach anticipating that we'll get there at some point. But then I have to move it again anyway. It was on a tarp. I don't know.
Yeah, you'd have to move it a little further back, but there's a difference between twenty-five feet away from the shoreline and two hundred feet. Right. When you're trying to haul it.
Especially with that hill you have.
Yeah. Last night, I was bought a little, uh, little wheelbarrow, uh, hook up to the, to the lawn tractor. I probably could put a yard in that and anyways, but yeah. So I, I've been thinking about all that too. And, and, um, believe me, I'm on the same page as you guys. I, I think this was a good discussion. Timeframe, sand is priority, uh, design, uh, we're pretty close. Uh, Joe's been great to work with on, on this stuff. Uh, we get feedback. This feedback will prove invaluable. We can, uh, I don't want to speak for you, Joe, but, um, you know, I think we've got enough here now to make some adjustments. I'm not quite sure exactly what they are. I have to look through the notes here. And then, I don't know. Get, um, get another meeting, get on the agenda again. Again, I, I want to respect your time. Here we're going almost an hour in on, on my time. I know you got other business, so I, 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 I don't want to hold you guys up.
You're right. I agree with, uh, President Larson that we really can't spend much more time, uh, try to design this thing on the fly. Uh, I think you've heard our, our concerns then, uh, about, uh, making sure that you have a erosion of sand from the proposed perched beach into the lake. Uh, involve, uh, reduction in, sl- small reduction in size, uh, a little bit of setback in that. And the and the, uh, op or retain all. Uh, and again, uh, I think to the point that, uh, having a contractor who can speak to the details of how the work will be conducted, what, uh, measures will be taken in construction to prevent erosion, all that sort of thing, uh, is something we'll have addressed at each meeting. Uh, we'll certainly take it on our agenda for our March meeting. Uh, and again, I, we probably this, give you time to get the work done, uh, this season. Uh, but as, uh, Commissioner Larson pointed out, pretty unlikely you're going to find a contractor, uh, who would be available, uh, on that short notice.
Right.
So, uh, I, you know, I think that the, the one thing that, um, we might, if I, I'll have to get back and review, uh, details, uh, of our regulation. Certainly, uh, if approve any part of, uh, it would be the, uh, removal of the dock, uh, which is, you know, pretty much a, a whole separate thing. Um, and, and that's something which, as you say, is going to be hand tools and, uh, a fairly narrow window, uh, of being able to, uh, a dig in the lake bed, but not sink in. So, uh, I think we'll have to leave this, uh, application for the time being. I will, as, as you say, we'll, we'll bring it up again at the, at our next meeting, uh, and try to keep some communication open uh, between you, Gary, and Joe and Commissioner, uh, as, as it, as it develops. And particularly try and come with a, uh, plan that we have time to adequately review, uh, prior to our next consideration.
Yeah.
Uh, Commissioner Larson, yes.
I, I, I do have one other, you know, question, I guess, on the remediation. In that is, is it worth it? You know, I think it is to put some kind of erosion perimeter around the sand piles that are on the lake bed right now, so that as the spring rains come in, it doesn't, you know, continue to wash the sand into the lake prior to us being able to get the sand out of the lake. You know, and that, I don't think is hard to do. You just put some hay bales around the, the area there. But right now, you know, all the water that runs down that slope uh, from his yard over there where the beach currently is, is just washing more sand into the lake.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I don't see that as a problem. Um, I guess I just have to find some hay bales. I don't know if I can find it, but I'll find it.
Or, or the, um, you could do the filter fabric, uh, the, the black fabric walls.
Yeah.
They stake around, uh, construction sites.
Silt fence or?
Silt fence, yeah, silt fence. Thank you.
But then, you know, you can get that ready-made, uh, Home Depot or any other, uh, home improvement store. So that would be relatively available. Might even be uh, easier to work with than the hay bales, trying to schlep those around. But, but I, I think Commissioner Larson does have a, a good point there, uh, that, uh, we're at a season when, uh, erosion is likely to happen and trying to, and, and taking measures to prevent that. Uh, both now and even while you're trying to move the sand, you know, you're disturbing it and that's likely to cause erosion. So silt fence or hay bales uh, to, uh, prevent movement into the lake bed.
So it, it's a fill fence, F I L L fence?
S I L T.
A filt fence.
Silt.
Yeah. Silt, silt. Got it. Okay. I was hearing F. Okay. Silt fence. Okay. All right. Um, one, just one other suggestion. Um, I, I don't know if it's inside a protocol or not, but as we put together the, the next iteration here, could we have a working session with one of the commissioners, um, to get some feedback perhaps? And then, and then that way we maybe can short circuit some of the lengthy discussions during the meeting?
Any discussion, we have to have, our discussions have to occur in open meeting, in public meetings. Uh, again, you can, you can, we can have some informal, uh, communication, certainly keeping us uh, posted and as you say, timely notification, uh, so that we don't have to try to do this on the fly.
Okay, yeah, I want to, I want to eliminate that problem. Yeah, okay. All right. So we'll, we'll, um, you know, throw a draft out or have some communication.
Okay. Gary, Gary, I would like to get in the record. We have your permission to exceed our sixty-five day time requirement to act on the application. We, we are allowed up to sixty-five days at your permission to, uh, to extend that window. To extend that window.
Okay. So, yeah, I. Uh, yes, I, yes, you have my permission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that, uh, Joe, because I had that in my notes to. Uh, a sixty-five a day extension will put us at April fifteenth uh, from the current deadline. Okay, uh, well, folks, I'd like to move on now to our other. Uh, agenda item, our other application, which is uh, A one twenty-nine. Uh, for the project proposed, uh, retail at um, five eight road. Uh, hold on here a second while I pull up that. And uh, who do we have on the call representing the applicants here? And you are?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, my name is Matthew Bruton. I'm an engineer from B L Companies here on behalf of the applicant.
Okay. Okay, uh, my notes uh, say that we have had. One minor update, we received a revised plan uh, that included a sidewalk along Lake Road. Uh, as far as I'm aware, there have been no other uh, material changes in the plan. Uh, and certainly nothing would be germane to our consideration. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to share a plan on the screen if you want. I can show you, I can show you that sidewalk if that would uh, please the commission.
Uh, anybody else have need to see that? I've looked at it and. Commissioner Larson, Commissioner Monroe, anyone want to pull that up or can we just?
I saw it, man. Uh, how did you, how did you uh, figure out where to put the sidewalk?
Uh, um, Mr. Larson, the sidewalk was a request or a future request that we're expecting to receive from. The Planning and Zoning Commission, um, as it would need to be in the public right of way, we placed it between. The existing curb line of Lake Road and the property line um, for this parcel. So. It's a long, a long lake road in between those two boundaries of the curb line and the property line.
Did you had any discussion with Jim Halcy uh, on that?
I spoke to him briefly about it, um. Uh, prior, after the first meeting, I have not spoken to him since about it, since it's being placed. Uh, we obviously have not gone to. Be planning and zoning commission yet.
Yep. Okay, because I am the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I don't know. Where the town was wanting the sidewalk to go, but I know Jim had, I asked Jim, do you know where the sidewalk's going to go? And he said, yep. So, uh.
Uh, when I spoke to him, I.
I think you're pretty close.
Where it is being placed, yeah. Again, happy to, once we get to planning and zoning, if you guys wanted to. Shift a few feet in either direction, you know, not not a big deal on our part. Um, but took it, took a stab at it based on our conversation and I think it's a, in a good spot for, for the moment.
Okay, yep, I do not need to see the drawing.
In any event, I'm not sure that's germane to our consideration from a wellness point of view. Uh, I have a communication here from Agent Wagner.
You might have froze up on us, George. We didn't hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now? I haven't clicked any controls.
Yep.
Okay, uh, again, as I say, I have some unstable internet connection. And of course, I don't know when I'm blanking out. Somebody has to tell me. Okay, uh, the communication I have here relates to the stormwater management, but again. Uh, this application is relates to uh, wetlands and water courses in specifically to the fact that this. Parcel is within, at least a portion of the parcel is within two hundred feet of the Cheney Brook. Uh, water course and the associated wetlands. So I'm not sure that the uh, you know, stormwater management from the property, which actually runs down. To toward Route Six uh, would be germane to our discussion, uh, which would have to do with any potential impacts. On uh, the Cheney Brook, uh, which is of course on the other side of Lake Road. Uh, as far as I can tell, and according to the application, uh, there's. No anticipated impact of this project on that water course or wetlands. Largely due to the fact that Lake Road is at an elevation higher than the. Project and and the parcel and. Effectively acts as a berm between the project area and the uh, wetlands and water course. So. Unless I mistaken, uh, we could act on this application. Without further consideration. Since the application again relates specifically to the brook. And the, you know, the two hundred foot upland, uh, so-called upland review area. Perhaps we should say contiguous area rather than upland in this case. So to Commissioner Larson, uh, did you have any comment on the application or questions or comments?
Only that Matt seemed to be raising his hands, he must have something.
Oh, thanks, Mr. Larson. I was just, I was just going to say, Mr. Chairman, I don't, uh, I don't disagree with anything that you've said. Uh, the site is downhill uh, and away from Lake Road and Cheney Brook and everything flows towards Route Six, as you said, so. Uh, I was just going to reiterate what you said, that we have no direct or indirect um, impacts on the wetlands. Um, everything is just in the upland review area, so.
So I'd like to make a motion that we approve permit application twenty-one dash twenty-nine Garrett Homes LLC, five eighty Lake Road. Construction of a ten thousand six hundred and forty square foot, single story retail building with utilities and paid parking and loading area.
We had a second from Commissioner Monroe, um, okay, and I would again note that as a. Condition that uh, that are finding that there will be uh, negative or no impact. On the wetland or water course. Under consideration, that that finding is part of our decision or supports our decision. Okay, so with that, any further discussion? See, now I'll uh, call for a vote and we'll do it by roll call. Commissioner Larson.
I.
Uh, Commissioner Monroe.
I.
And I, Chairman Elliott, also vote aye, so the motion carries three zero zero. You got your wetlands permit, now you get to go to the other guys and see what they have to say.
I always like to.
I I appreciate your time tonight, gentlemen. Thank you so much. And thanks, Joe, for your help.
All right. Your excuse from the call now. And we can move on to our agenda. Okay, I guess the rest of it is uh, up Agent Wagner, the other business. Uh, enforcement actions, agent report and so forth, so take it away.
Yeah, the only thing uh, I got that I wanted to share was a, I received a, an application from uh. From D E P for permit application for use of pesticides in state waters. Um, it's for Andover Lake. I was applied for on behalf of Alma and they're required, the. The company that's performing that, the work is required to. Notify uh, the local and the wetlands agency, um. So I just wanted to share that with you guys.
We can give you a little background on that if you'd like.
Yeah, I take it as a herbicide application of some.
Yeah, yeah, so uh, we had been talking with, I think it's Northeast Aquatic Services. Um, about ways to mitigate the weeds in the lake because of the issues that we had last year with the Eladia. Uh, and they had proposed several different options, um, a couple of which we want to be prepared to pursue if we need to. One of them is the, you know, use of the herbicides in the lake and um, you know, they've, they've done a pretty good job, they've uh, in terms of selecting the. The herbicides that they would use. We were very clear that we didn't want to kill any of the fish or have any other problems. Um, and this is something that they've, they've done on a regular basis. The permitting process generally takes about six months with D E E P, so we have passed them to, you know, start the process as soon as possible so that. If we find by the end of July that we're having a weed problem, we can elect to to bring them in and and do something to try and mitigate it. Um, there will be another permit coming through for uh, doing some potential dredging uh, for the weeds as well. Uh, that's another method that they have where they do what they call preferential dredging, where they'll go into a weed bed and they'll dredge it out. And pull the weeds out. Um, that's something they might do for lily pads or it might do for uh, um, cattails, that sort of thing. But that, I believe, is something that is in your hands. It's not D E E P. They indicated that that wasn't a D E E P permit, that would be a wetlands permit. So that's yet to come, but this one is uh, just getting it started in case we need it this summer.
Okay. So it was basically an FYI, we don't have any jurisdiction over that activity, so. Okay, um, and of course, uh, the ongoing concern of nutrients entering the lake, which are, of course, I'm sure. Supporting that healthy population of Eladia.
Yes. And that's our, that's our biggest problem is how do we, how do we get our hands around that and and clear up any, any septic system problems around the lake that are causing additional issues?
Not to mention fertilizers on lawns.
Oh, yeah. Yes, that's the worst.
Uh, and again, unfortunately, we don't have any role to play in that, uh, so all we can do is wish you best of luck.
And all we can do is educate. That's about our only choice and beg.
Uh, Chair Eli, I have a, yeah, a comment, especially since we have an Alma member here. Um, with the, with this uh, herbicide and pesticides that they're talking about um, using to kill some of these weeds. Um. It isn't going to work unless we don't keep bringing the stuff into the lake after the. Herbicide's been put in there. I mean, if you, if it takes a year or two years or three years to get rid of those weeds, but we keep doing the same thing that we're doing, which is. Taking our canoes and our kayaks to a lake in New York somewhere that has all this stuff growing out of control. And flopping our late, our canoe back into the lake, it's just going to start instantly all over again.
Yeah, that's another, another area that we've spent a lot of time actually trying to figure out how we can do it. I mean, we do educate the members on that. We try and make it clear that they, you know, so they all know not to do that and to wash your boat if you take it anywhere else. Um, we actually had a, a, a guy that came to the lake last year. He wanted to rent boats to people and we turned him down for that very reason. Because we weren't comfortable that we could be sure that, you know, he wasn't bringing weeds in. Um, so yeah, that, we know that that's an uphill battle for us. That's something that we, we do spend some time and energy on trying to figure out. You know, can we put a wash station at the, at the right of ways so that they would actually, you know, people bringing their boats in would automatically wash them. We wouldn't have to worry about it. Um, you know, it it becomes difficult because then you have to deal with vandalism and things like that. And, you know, you don't want to put bleach out in where kids are going to come hurt themselves with it. So, uh, but yeah, we know that that's, that's a big problem and it's a question I ask people every time I see them on the lake if, you know, if they don't have a sticker on their boat. I ask them, are they a member? Did they wash their boat? You know, they almost always say yes, so they know or they know to say yes. I don't know which.
Right. I know, it it seems like a lot of the things that we do in this, you know, around the lake, it's a lot of people just don't understand what what's going on and and that's the reason why they make bad decisions.
Yeah.
Hope we can more information out there somehow, make it more. Uh, uh, like, you know, we're all going to get in, do this together because it's not, you know, it's a good idea, it's a, it's a. I mean, I I took the time today to look through some of the chemicals that that they, that uh, that you're going to be using and. You know, I know they say they're safe. But don't forget, somebody used to say that smoking cigarettes was safe too. For her five, about thirty years before they finally said, oh, really, it isn't safe, um.
This is all pretty hypothetical, the woman, I'm afraid. We digress a little bit from the uh, commission's business. So uh, you can uh, take that up as a sidebar conversation, okay?
Okay.
All right, and then any of this, you see, it's a, it's, right now, we're just dealing with FYI. And remains to be seen whether any action will be required.
Okay, well, as this, as exciting as this is, I'm going to sign off then.
Okay.
You don't need me anymore.
We'll let you go.
Have a good night, guys.
Thank you.
Alright.
Okay, so have there been any enforcement actions or?
Not quite, uh, hard to see anything under all the snow, um. So I haven't, uh, I haven't heard of anything yet, um, no. Uh, no upland approvals, there's one uh. That I just, I just received a permit for, I'll have to brief you forward on uh. About uh, on the next meeting. I just received the application at the end of last week. So uh, I'll put that on the next, the next month's agenda.
Okay, good enough. So, uh, it sounds like we're winding down the regular business. Uh, we have a. Meeting scheduled for Monday, March seventh, uh, it will actually, I'll remind you, we are. We've warned them we will have a hearing, uh, with, uh, for. Received public comment on our proposed revisions to our regulations. And uh, our, our meeting will actually directly follow that hearing. And presumably approval of the uh, regulations will be an item on the agenda for that meeting. Uh, as well as, of course, continuing with twenty-one twenty-seven, which we hope will be in good order and received in advance, well in advance. Of the meeting, so we have time to review it. Any last minute thoughts or comments? Because if not, I will happily ask for unanimous consent to adjourn the meeting. What is it now? We'll call it eight thirty P M. Any objection? Seeing none, we can stand adjourned. Thanks, Abby, for being here and I hope that you will continue to be able to be with us. I got your mail and. Realize that you're in a hard spot, uh, and will. Be flexible. So that you can be flexible.
Thank you very much. I I don't anticipate it'll affect my, my abilities here. Don't worry, but I just wanted to let you know. So, thank you.
Right. Okay, so once again, we stand adjourned and so we can all press the little red leaf button.
Night, everybody.
All right, good night.